Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Cook County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Wednesday, July the 2nd, 2025, and it's nine o'clock a.m. We'll start off the proceedings with a pledge of allegiance. Hannah, who is joining us today up here, will lead us off.
All right.
The flag's right here.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with its liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Julia Krabs with Eastside Church. It's going to lead us in prayer.
Hannah Mubel, just a little bit.
Rachel Laces, how's that?
Thank you. Thank you. This morning, I wanted to read out of a Passion translation of a passage from Proverbs, chapters two, verses six through eight. Wisdom is a gift from a generous God. In every word he speaks is full of revelation. It becomes a fountain of understanding within you. For the Lord has hidden a storehouse of wisdom, made accessible to his godly lovers. He becomes your personal bodyguard as you follow his ways, protecting and guarding you as you choose what is right. Would you pray with me? Dear Heavenly Father, we just come before you this morning and ask for your wisdom, your knowledge, that hidden treasure house of wisdom that is needed when decisions are being made for our government, for the Cook County in particular, Lord, and we just thank you for these that have stepped up into the board's position and for those that are here in this, this building, Lord. We just ask for your wisdom, your concern, your discernment and your knowledge so that they can make the correct decisions for our county and for our whole area around here. And we know that you are in, in this room and your presence is here. We just ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
He will start out with public comment. Is there any public comment? Anyone which to speak in regards to anything? Uh, online, any public comments? If you want to speak, you'll have to type into the chat box so we can unlock you. Well, standing. So when we write along, uh, consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda that is written.
I will second that motion.
Most have been made second to prove the consent agenda. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
I'm aye.
Crawford, aye.
Barney, aye. So move. First part of business, uh, Belneck Exhibit Center wins the 2025 Naco Achievement Award and County Commissioner.
Okay, yes. So let's, Sean, you need to come up here. We're going to have our director of the, of the museum come on up. Right out here in the center. So the National Association of Counties puts out an achievement award program. It's a non-competitive award program. We're at the magazine, innovative county government programs in eighteen categories, covering a wide spectrum of county responsibilities. Sean, the commissioners, we decided to enter the Belneck Exhibit Center as our project for Cook County. And Sean and the historical society worked very hard on doing the application. The only thing I did was put in the password. So I'm looking to take part in that as well. So this is his achievement award and I congratulate you, Sean, for all of it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You were excited.
Well, we should be. Okay. Thank you.
Jason, do you need to get a picture?
We're going to do one next week where we go in front of the actually Belneck exhibit, but here we are. Thank you. Thank you very much, Sean. You did the work.
Yeah, I heard that. Picked off wildfire season briefing. County manager, Will?
Thank you, Commissioner Barney. Uh, Matt Smith with the Cook County Fire and Rescue this year. To kind of brief you guys on the fire season and talk about the delegation of authority. So I'll turn it over to Chief Smith.
Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for having us. So my name's Matt Smith. I'm the fire chief at Cook County Fire and Rescue. Uh, so I'm here to talk to you about private land wildfires and really outside the fires. So Cook County has, um, we cover at Cook County Fire and Rescue four hundred and fifty square miles of each county. And as for everyone, the county is a three thousand square mile. So there's a lot of land that is structurally unprotected by, um, our agency. And so I also serve as the County Fire Defense Board Chief, which is just a representative to the state fire marshal if we were to need additional resources. And so, um, I brought some partners with me that we collaborate on truly every fire in Cook County, uh, between the sheriff's department, um, the Rangeland Association, and then us as Cook County Fire and Rescue, because we also provide the ambulance service throughout. And so I thought we could, I would introduce each one of our partners, let them tell you really how they, how they, uh, what their role is on the scene of a fire and then ultimately just like to talk with you guys about if we were to need help and last year, you know, there was lots of fire on the ground. Um, if we need to make a request from the state for a fire on private land, um, we would go through the state fire marshal's office and really what that, just how that actually would work. And so Dylan Webb from the Oregon State Fire Marshal's here to just walk us through the process. So just be a brief, uh, brief meeting, um, or brief section. To start off with, so any fire outside of the fire district, um, so it is really the role of the sheriff to start that response. Decide, so where is it? And, uh, just, just to start the process, because that's really delegated to the sheriff himself. So Mitch Madden and A.J. Crawford from Sheriff's Departments here, they can just go over exactly what their roles are on these fires.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, my name's Mitch Madden, a patrol lieutenant with the Cook County Sheriff's Office and seated next to me is our emergency manager, A.J. Crawford. Um, so as Chief Smith talked about, uh, just a little bit ago, uh, the sheriff's office collaborates, uh, very closely with Cook County Fire and Rescue, but also ODF, BLM, and Forest Service to include the RFPA, uh, which is out in the post Palina, but also includes the Brothers Hampton, uh, RFPA as well. So last year, we learned a lot during the fires, um, and we learned that the collaboration during these incidents is extremely important. The evacuations that, uh, come out as a result of a fire lands on the shoulders of the sheriff's office to, uh, make sure that happens. And so again, that collaboration with the, uh, with Cook County Fire and Rescue or any other fire entity is important. There are the, the professionals that know the fire behavior. They know the direction. They have the equipment that can get up in the air and, and figure out the direction of this fire and any threats that, uh, our community might face. The, uh, evacuations, the way they work is typically our patrol deputies are first on scene. And so they will assess the immediate life, uh, uh, life, uh, safety threats that a fire might pose. And so they'll immediately jump into action and order, uh, level three evacuations, which is most extreme that we will get to. That's you need to leave now. And so once we kind of roll through the evacuations, then we'll spool up our search and rescue to supplement our patrol deputies for our level one and level two evacuation notices. But at the end of the day, the evacuation will come from the, the sheriff's office, not just the, uh, uh, from the, the fire department or other state or federal fire resources.
Thanks, Mitch. DJ?
So, uh, throughout Cook County, and really it covers the majority of Cook County, there's very, uh, a limited area that does not have any fire protection at all. There is a small section of Cook County that doesn't have any. Um, but the Rangeland Associations cover much of the area that's not protected by the fire district. And so we have Don Tishida here from the Oregon Department of Forestry, who oversees the Rangeland Associations in Cook County. So I'll have Don up and explain.
Morning, commissioners. Again, uh, my name's Don Tishida. I worked with Oregon Department of Forestry underneath the Rangeland Program. Um, so I function as a, a partner with the Rangeland Associations. There's twenty-eight in Oregon currently. Um, two of them are within Cook County. Uh, again, as mentioned, Post Palina and Brothers Hampton. Um, so those associations are strictly wildland, uh, fire protection associations on private property. Uh, both those associations encompass areas that were, that weren't protected by any form of protection prior to them forming. And, and again, those associations are just for private properties. Their boundaries do include federal ground, uh, within their, their jurisdictional area that federal, they have agreements with the Bureau of Land Management here currently, uh, for mutual assistance. Um, so that allows them to request assistance from the federal side, um, for fires that are truly on private property and vice versa. The BLM can request assistance for, from them for fires that are on federal property. Um, so those associations are, both are very independent associations. They have their own board, they're nonprofits. Uh, last year, they were very busy on a couple of different fires. Post Palina was very busy last year on, uh, you know, fires that came off the federal ground and, and, uh, Crazy Creek, Wiley Flat and, uh, Rail Ridge. And then Post Palina, or excuse me, Brothers Hampton also helped on, uh, Wiley Flat as well on that side of their protection area. So they worked hand in hand with the federal partners, um, Chief Smith in his role, you know, to help protect the structure side of it. Um, you know, that's not their, their role out there. They are strictly wildland, but they will protect, uh, what they need to protect within their areas. Um, so again, the cooperation between the federal side and the RPAs is, is, is well-established and, and is working. And so we'll, I'll say that they help each other out. Um, the RP, Mado's neighbors helping neighbors, which truly is, uh, neighbors helping neighbors associations. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
So in case of a fire outside the fire district, and again, it's really fire anywhere in Cook County, um, we, we arrive, we assess, we back up, we make a command post, and we start to collaborate with all of the partners involved. And this is just, um, some of the partners involved in, in providing the protection. So when it's determined that we have a structural threat outside of the fire district, you know, and we need to ask for additional help, that next step, and really the only avenue for us to bring in more resources, if the federal agencies haven't been involved because their property is involved in it, they also don't do structural protection. So, or there's a significant structural threat is we would make a request to the Oregon State Fire. And so part of that request is really twofold. It's one, me that functions as the fire defense chief, which is again, just a representative to the state of Oregon's fire marshal of, yep, there's a structural threat. And then two, uh, the county commission has a role in delegating the authority to manage the emergency incident as it pertains to the structures, um, that are either under threat or could be threatened. And so there's some signatures that go on a paper that really, but you guys are delegating that authority because ultimately that authority rely, or falls to you, uh, prior to that delegation in areas that are unprotected. And so, um, it's not hard. I just wanted to just go over that process with you. Uh, I'll have Dylan Webb from the Oregon State Fire Marshal come up and explain. So when that request happens, um, he's usually there at a command post, or at least we're talking to him in that collaboration. And then that can go very quick. And then we'll, we do need to have some paper signed or some delegation signed once those teams arrive to start. Uh, Dylan, would you come up and else with you?
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, again, my name's Dylan Webb. I'm the regional mobilization coordinator for the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office. Um, and I serve the shoots, Crook, Jefferson, and Wheeler Counties. So a lot of words to say, basically, I'm a liaison between the local fire chiefs, the fire defense board chiefs, and the state fire marshal's office. So, um, my position exists basically to help bring in more resources. So as Chief Smith already alluded to, uh, when a fire is burning and more resources are needed, uh, Chief Smith, as the fire defense board chief, will make a request to me, um, that then activates, uh, our chain at the state fire marshal's office and, um, ultimately ends with the signature from the governor to invoke the Conflagration Act. And as daunting as that may seem, it, it actually happens very quickly. Um, I mean, five to ten minutes and it, and it can be done and that triggers the resource response. Um, Oregon Department of Forestry and Oregon State Fire Marshal each have three incident management teams. So a lot of times you'll be getting, um, one of each of those teams. They collaborate very well. They bring in a, a lot of people, um, about fifty people per team. Uh, so they start to set up their little cities and they, they really take control of the incident. Um, and the delegation of authority happens. Once that conflagration has been enacted, the teams get mobilized. Uh, those incident commanders will sit down with you and, and sign that delegation of authority. That basically just releases the authority that you have over those unprotected lands to the incident management team, and they're going to take responsibility throughout that incident. Um, some objectives will be set up. They'll walk you through all of this. Um, they've done it many, many times all throughout the nation, not just Oregon. So they're very well-versed in how this process works and they'll be there hand in hand with you. So, um, it, when we start talking about how, you know, uh, governor's signatures and all those types of things, it's very streamlined. We're, we're pretty well-versed in, in how these processes work. So that's, uh, that's how, how I fit in the mix.
Great. Thank you.
Do you have a card that you can leave, please? Do you have a card? Yes, I'd, I'd like to have your card, please.
So when it comes to the delegation, and we've done it a couple of ways, you know, over the years. And in talking with Will this year, my suggestion is that we include either Will or one of the commissioners in that, you know, that could sign for the county. You've delegated to that to me in the past, which is just fine. However, I don't know as spread out as we can get and as diverse, you know, as it is. I think there's a really a role for the commissioners to advocate for themselves and, you know, just some of the politics that go on in state government. And so I think it'd just be helpful just to add either Will or one of you guys so that I know who to call and contact and so that we can get you involved. Again, it's not as timely as just the request. I think we can handle that request in the timely fashion. It's just if a team were to come in and how to make sure that the county commission is plugged in appropriately. But clearly you have emergency manager and the sheriff's office completely engaged. It's just making sure you guys are briefed on what resources actually came and what the capability is. And I thought if you guys, do you guys have questions?
So Matt, so last year I was a brand new commissioner.
Yes.
I was sitting at a board of commissioner meeting and you guys came over Zoom and said, go up to search and rescue. And I had to sign. I didn't know if I was signing the county away, my firstborn grandchild. I didn't know what I was signing. My heart was thumping out of my chest. But I am a member of Post Palina Rangeland Protection and I have a ranch in Palina. And so I know where the guys are. I know because I'm talking to them and so I know Palina. But I don't know over on this part of the county or anything. So there's a part there that is kind of limiting because if you were asking me another part of the county, I'm not going to know the answers or where the guys are or how the wind's blowing, whereas I'm super tuned in to my area.
Yeah.
So that's one of the things that I see. I mean, I have no problem with Will being the delegate, but that is one of the things without looping us in and each of us having this particular knowledge of that area. That's what I see kind of as a little bit of a, I don't know, hole or I don't know how to put that, but you know what I'm saying?
So there was last year when that happened. So this was after the Labor Day fires.
Yes.
After a long summer of deployments for the state fire marshal's office, there was some real miscommunication on number one, what county the fire was in and how the state fire marshal's office had deployed. They had deployed to Grant County, um, to the Dayville area. The command post was set up there. And it wasn't our, uh, mutually coordinator. So there was a different person other than Dylan Webb, but he wasn't our regional mutually coordinator. He was the one from Grant County and didn't know our system. So again, there was a bit of a hiccup in that. And so that wasn't ideal. Ultimately, uh, the role of a commission or will would just be to say for that particular entity, uh, fire, so that threat, you're just signing the delegation that you're giving up control of that because you guys hold that today. And you're just delegating it to that incident management team. Um, and it's not to manage the people. It's not to know where they're at. It's really just to say that the county's authorities may be given over to the management team. But I'm positive that's not what was communicated to you. So we were having a hard time that weekend communicating.
Well, and then we had the Durgan Fire. We had a fire. It, uh, it blew over a ten bulldozer wide, uh, fire break. It was coming in grassland. They thought the town of Palina, and I know we're not very big and we're not very fancy, but we like what we got. And so, yes, it was a very terrifying because like I say, I didn't know what I was signing, but I just figured, okay, and I did it. But yeah, that would be my only question. And that maybe is a communication between Will and like he knows it's Palina, so between me or he knows it's other areas and it's between Brian and Seth. That might be just what we need to do.
Yeah. And so each one of the commission, if you don't have it, I think you each do have my cell phone. You guys are, have that. Obviously Will has my cell phone. I have a, um, a backup. So our operations chief Jeremiah Kenfield is, uh, if I'm absent, can, you know, function as that liaison. And then ultimately want to make sure you guys are comfortable with information. So if you just want to know, and even though what is going on, you're always welcome to call me and I can fill in some of those blanks.
And I thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. No, I'm fine with Will doing it. I think that's, that's fair to me.
Very well. Uh, you were going to speak.
Yeah. The only other thing I was going to say is, um, once the conflagration has been enacted, um, there's a regular, uh, called cooperators meeting. And that's a really good, uh, opportunity for a representative of the commissioners to, to be in attendance at. And the daily operation will go over, weather will go over what's going on. And you'll get a lot of those questions answered. So the cooperators meeting is a really important.
And you're right. I attended those. I attended those regularly. And then I was very lucky. I had Shane Jeffries called me every day. I had, and I had the, well, we also had the fire camp at the Palina rodeo grounds. So I kind of had a lot of communication coming into me. And so I was very fortunate and unfortunately we were in the bowl of all the fires. But, uh, yeah, hopefully we don't have that this year.
Man, I just have a, like a process question, I guess. Um, does it make sense to have like, if, if I'm pointed to that role, does it make sense to have a backup if I'm out on vacation, you know, sick?
And I think if I'm able to, if you still want me to be on that delegation, um, you or I could do that easily. And if you just have one of the commissioners as a backup, because even if I sign on behalf of the commissioners, I want to talk to each one of them. So you guys are.
I'm available.
Thank you. And, and obviously if it's Palina, I'm available. But yeah. And I do want to say that our Rangeland Protection Agency, we put out eleven fires last year, which you guys didn't have to maybe come to. So, and there are forty-five members in Post Palina. So we are kind of tiny but mighty and we all have, just so the public knows, we all have our own equipment. Like at my ranch, I have a dozer. I have a pumper. I have a water truck. Other of the ranches have stuff. And we really don't wait. We just go out there and do the best we can. And I came upon a car accident and basically it was me and three neighbors and we shoveled. And that's how we put the fire. And that's just what we do out there. And I'm sure Brothers Hampton is exactly the same way as we are. We just work together.
And the Rangelands do amazing work. Um, you know, Don Tishida, who's, uh, if you don't know, is, is a legendary, uh, a person in the fire world. So I've had three boys go through wildland fire on a seasonal basis. All have worked under Don in different positions he's held. And so him being collaborator, the collaborator on behalf of the Rangelands, it's really an outstanding service throughout, throughout Oregon. And they do, if you, you understood the landmass they protect, it is absolutely incredible. And to say that neighbors are helping neighbors, that's exactly what's.
Yeah, that's what we are doing. But anyway, yeah. And last night I, I had that lightning app. It was really cracking up there at the, at the eastern end of the county. I was a little worried. I was like, please rain come with the, with the lightning. But yeah.
So our last agreement was in twenty-two. So.
Yeah.
We'll ask Eric to update that with the relevant information and.
Yeah.
Call and.
And I think so, I think Eric, because I had emailed it to Will, the state fire marshal has a template that they use that, um, and Eric can, you, you can decide how you want that to read for on behalf of the county as far as going soon. Um, I just wanted to make sure the county was maybe one tick more involved than we had left it before. I think that would be helpful.
Yep. And that's fine.
Yep.
We're not eagerly willing to, but yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Matt.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Thank everybody there.
Yes, thank you all.
Republic Service. Great adjustment. Courtney?
Hi.
Great. Gathered here today. My name is Courtney Voss. I'm the municipal manager for Republic Services here in central Oregon. I am joined by our general manager, Erica Heitzma. We are going to talk through our financials and answer any questions you have about our current performance, um, and current work to improve customer service. Erica is going to start with our financial information and, um, talk about why we are requesting a ten percent increase to rates. I understand that the commissioners, um, may not be interested in considering a ten percent rate increase there. Uh, but we would like to talk through what we, um, are hoping you will approve today, which at the very least would be the equivalent of county disposal. So, um, uh, because tip fees at the landfill are increasing. That is not a cost that we can control. So as we are continuing conversations about, um, what's, uh, what the board of county commissioners is interested in doing with rates overall or franchise agreements overall, it would be really helpful to at least get that cost covered. Um, but I'll let Erica talk through all of it and we can answer questions.
All right. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having us today. Like Courtney said, my name is Erica Heitzma. I'm the general manager for Republic Services and, um, to kick us off, I'm going to go over our 2024 financial performance. So, uh, to start us off, looking at our revenue in 2024, total franchise revenue was $2.6 million. It increased from a year-over-year perspective by $256,000. Both our commercial and residential verticals contributed to the year-over-year increase with our residential line of business contributing $2,000 of the $256,000 increase. A couple of things, uh, drove this year-over-year increase, which included a ten percent rate increase in 2023, in which half of that carried over into 2024. And then last year, our eight percent increase, um, which half of that carried into 2024. The remainder of, uh, the year-over-year increase can be contributed to a volume growth or unit growth increase. So looking at our expenses, um, in 2024, our total expenses was $2.4 million. This increased from a year-over-year perspective by $296,000. I'm going to go over the top five highest expense categories that we have, which contributes up to about eighty-two percent of our total, uh, expenses. So starting off, uh, with labor, labor is our highest expense category. In 2024, it totaled $1.1 million. About forty-seven percent of our total expenses. So from a year-over-year, uh, perspective, it increased by about $215,000. Um, what drove this year-over-year increase included a cost of living adjustment that we did in 2023, which carried over into 2024. Every year we do an annual, um, wage adjustment for all of, all of our employees. So that was an impact in 2024 compared to 2023. And then we also had additional costs incurred relating to hiring, staffing, and route coverage. Our second highest cat cost category is our disposal. Disposal was $412,000, which is about seventeen percent of our total expenses. From a year-over-year perspective, it increased by about $12,000. What drove this increase included, um, one percent growth in our residential tons. In our residential tons and 21% growth in our industrial tons. Let's, excuse me, the third highest cost category is our insurance cost category. Insurance in 2024 was $157,000. This is about 6% of our total costs. An increase year over year by $71,000. From a cost analysis perspective. We saw a reduction in our total costs, or excuse me, our total claims by 60% with 13 fewer claims in 2024. Compared to 2023. Employee injury is reduced by 50% uh, with fewer claims. However, the year over year increase, uh, was contributed to one accident that we had in 2024 that we didn't have in 2023. And this, um, particular accident caused, um, third party to claim injury. And that's what drove the year of your increase. Our fourth highest, uh, cost category is depreciation of our equipment. Depreciation is $138,000. Again, this is about 6% of our total costs. It actually decreased from a year over year perspective by $15,000. Uh, we did actually get two trucks into our prime ball hauling division. However, the year over year reduction in this cost category is due to an increase in more assets with less, uh, book value. And then our fifth highest cost category is fuel. Fuel is $126,000. This is about 5% of our total expenses. It actually decreased from a year over year perspective by $6,000. And this is attributed to a reduction in fuel consumption of about 3,000 less gallons compared to our prior year. And in addition, there was a reduction in our overall cost, fuel cost per gallon of about 40 cents per gallon. So overall, our contract performance or net income, uh, in 2024 totaled $163,000 or 6.1% operating margin. So looking at our 2025 forecast and how we approach that. So in 2025, we anticipate our operating expenses to increase by $182,000 or 5.9%. Most of our cost categories were forecasted at CPI water sewer trash, which was the index was 5.23%. There are a few categories that are increasing or expect to increase at a higher rate. First cost category is disposal. As Courtney mentioned in the beginning, disposal is expected to, the gate rates expected to increase by 11%. So from a financial perspective, this is roughly $83,000. Uh, the second cost category is franchise fees. Um, and this is expected to increase by $9,000. And this is all tied to revenue, projected revenue growth. Our rent increase is, I'm sorry, rent is increasing by $4,000, which is a result of, uh, property value increases. Our office expenses are increasing by 3% and this is, um, tied to, uh, management of, uh, the Republic Services website. And then fuel repairs, maintenance, uh, to our vehicles and it is increasing by 7%. And this is tied to our CPI plus volume growth. So again, in 2025, we are asking for a 10% increase to our rates. And if this is approved, our net projected income is $260,000 or 8.79%. So with all of that information, are there any questions?
I, yeah, I, I just think right now our contracts are woefully inaccurate, you know, inefficient. And so I think it's really important that we tackle that before we really dig into the, because I think we have a lot of questions. Or at least personally, I have a lot of questions about the insurance and all those things that I think we can get to. But I think it's important that we get to a point where we're protecting the citizens through the contracts. And then until that's done, I think it's really important that we wait. What's the other part you were talking about?
So, um, totally appreciate that, that feedback commissioner. I think, um. I guess the ask that I would have is that we consider today at least. A rate increase that will cover the cost of the county's disposal, the tip fee, which equates to 2.2. The 2.2% increase to rates will enable us to cover the costs that are completely outside of our control. That is the results of your gate rate increasing, uh, by 11%. So if we're able to, um, get that done today, that kind of, I don't want to say holds us, you know, protects us a little bit from those costs. Um, and then we're happy to have a conversation about, uh, franchise agreements and additional rates moving.
I think another thing I would just like to note is, um, you know, the cost increases that we do incur. There are standard inflationary increases such as cost of living increases, uh, wage increases for our employees. Um, there's fuel increases, even though year over year we saw a reduction, we are anticipating increases there. There's costs associated with us maintaining our parts and trucks. Um, so even though. Um, you know, again, I'll, I'll say we do appreciate the concern and the consideration regarding new franchise agreements. Um, I think an inflationary increase, and again, we approach it with CPI, which CPI from a year over year perspective was 5.23%. Um, and we're of course happy to engage in franchise agreement conversations. We're, we're actually doing that with most of our disused county partners as well. And those conversations are being had, um, as we also, uh, discuss our rate increase. So, um, we're definitely happy to do that.
So CPI, I believe this year is 2.4.
We look at CPI water sewer trash, uh, CPIU, you're correct, was approximately that percentage. But our industry lands in water sewer trash, um, and that's why there's generally an, uh, higher rates. So associated with that particular index.
But don't the other municipalities use the CPI, not the CPI water and waste?
They have approached it, um, and asked us to, um, uh. Look or change our, uh, financial projections to tie back to CPIU. However, we'll always strongly discourage that because as we continue to see our costs increase. It's usually very closely tied to CPI water sewer trash.
Yeah, a lot of your increases though are the same increases that everyone receives is labor and fuels and expenses and things of that nature. That are covered in CPI.
Another, I, I see what you guys are saying, that you want to get the first part now and the other part later. But I think that might be confusing and make people even more angry. That they get one raise and then they're like, oh, fine, that wasn't too bad. And then like two months later, they're like, oh, what? The same amount again? And so I, that would be very concerning to me to, and I understand the situation you guys are in. But, and I, I think Will can speak to it a little bit. He's looking into the, I think we should have something very soon and we can, we're not trying to drag our feet. And, and hold this off for months and months, but I, I think it would be very dangerous. And very infuriating to citizens to, I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads from the people in the crowd.
Just so the, the. I, I think I've mentioned this to Courtney, but for the public and for the, the board, I, I, I'm very close to having a draft franchise agreement that I'm ready. Almost ready to present to the board and then get a draft to, to Republic. So we're, we're very close in that regard, I would say. Board asked me to make a priority. I could probably have something ready for the board next week, but certainly push on, um. Terms of having, having a branch, uh, draft franchise agreement, it's ready for review.
So, and that, that process, so currently we have an existing franchise agreement with Creek County. Um, and. The process of renegotiating one, I mean, we can all work really hard to do that, but that is a mutual process that both parties have to agree to. And I have no reason to think that we wouldn't. That's going to take time. Um, and I think it will probably take more than a month. Or two or three to move through the legal process back and forth between our lawyers and yours. We are going to continue to experience margin erosion if we're not at least getting the basic. Costs that again, the 2.2% of our overall 10% ask is directly tied to the cost that is coming from you. And, and a reasonable cost, a rational cost. Jackie does a great job, love a landfill. Um, but if we are able to at least. Get that portion, um, understand what you're saying about cost increases in the future, but we don't know what you're going to do in the future. I mean, we may have a new agreement and you may very well come back and would hope you wouldn't do this and say, no increase for you. Um, so. Again, the ask is for us to at least today lock out of here, knowing that we can cover our disposable costs. And then we will enter into the conversations with the county about.
I think another thing to, to consider is, um, the more that we delay rate increases, there's a potential that. Higher rate increase would be requested or needed in order to cover some of these costs like disposal or inflationary increase. So that could be potentially more impactful to, uh, the citizens.
Yeah, I, I hear you and I feel bad, but I, I think if we do multiple increases, it's going to be super infuriating to people. And they're already going to be pissed. And again, I'm not here to beat anybody up, but there's, I think we've had lots and lots of conversations. About how services, there's issues with service and, and people are not, you guys are not the most popular people in Creek County right now. And.
Quite popular.
I mean, you are, no question, but the, 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 uh, both you are, but the umbrella of Republic has, has a lot of negative connotations. And again, if you guys are looking to see what I'm seeing, there's a lot of nods. And you know, the. Um, you know.
I think heard commissioner, I would say, you know, we've worked extremely hard over the past three years that I've been here to improve, um, service performance. I think we have seen those improvements in service performance. I do recognize that we still have, I think, a public perception and, um. Communications issue that needs to be resolved, but if you look at our year over year, um, miss pickup rates. Um, the commitments that we've made to bringing back local customer service, all of those things. Um, are, are the result of the work of this entire team. So, um, we're going to continue to do that. We are always happy to engage in conversations about improvements to the franchise agreements. We want to do business here. We just need to be in a place where, um, we're not in the red. And that's, that's why I think what we're concerned about. This is one of the contracts that is, um, most complicated for us from a financial perspective. And, um, again, disposal isn't our choice. We take the material from your landfill. So.
So. Jackie might shoot me and nobody else may agree, but I think the county has to have some skin in the game too. And so I would make a suggestion that it's going to kind of foul up our process a bit, but, um. The county will hold off on their increase, um, until we get this contract done. Then it'll be paid retroactive to the full amount at the time. I mean, it's either, it's either that or, 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 or what says that.
Yeah, no, and I.
But I don't mind putting some, you know, skin in the game.
Yeah, because I think we're all, oh, go ahead. That's, oh, yeah, no, because I think we're both working towards a goal to get a, a good contract that works for the citizens, work for you guys. I'm, I'm totally comfortable with that. Putting that on pause and that'll be.
I, I would like to hear Jackie's input on Brian's thing. Can you come up here and identify yourself and resume? Yeah, for the Zoom calls, please.
It's just more financing.
Jackie Davis landfill manager. Um, just a clarifying question, because we did all our programming changes yesterday for rate increases. So. That took a lot of work. So, uh. I'm going to remove that and keep them at their current cost of 62 a ton. And not increase to the 69 a ton. That's what you're asking.
Well, I, however, you, you might want to talk with the finance and how they want to do that, but you could leave it at the same, but only bill. At the, at the amount.
And then.
Because eventually they will be paying that total amount.
And then track what the difference is between.
Correct.
Yeah.
Does that work for you, Jackie? I mean, I.
It's a lot of extra work for us and a lot of work for Chelsea, but, uh, we can, we can make it happen.
Uh, yeah, I would just add like a little caveat to that, that despite kind of that recommendation, I, I would appreciate like a week for us to kind of. Look into exactly what that takes and make sure it is feasible. I, I trust Jackie that it's doable. Um. But I'd kind of like to understand like the true impact to the, to the landfill, just to make sure it's a, to workable thing. So I, that would just be my, my recommendation.
It would, it would almost be easier if I left it at, after we've already changed it. And did a credit back. That would be the most easiest. We wouldn't have to change our programming or anything. Um, and then I could just figure out what that difference is and credit their invoice. And then that amount is tracked that way, just going forward.
Which seems, which seems logical, but I do agree with Will that possibly we, we let Will have a little bit of time. For the two of you to kind of analyze and figure it out a little.
Believe it as is, I've already made the change.
Uh, yeah, I would just ask for a week for us to look at it, just like from a legal and finance perspective, just to make sure we're, we're checking boxes. Cause we did go through a whole process to adopt the schedule and there's.
Yes.
Some parameters on how.
Yeah, and I do like the idea of the credit back. I think that in that way you're not changing everything. You have that tracked. That seems, and then that solves your problems of your costs that is fixed that you can't do anything about.
Right.
But again, I don't know, is there like a motion that we need to make at this time or how do we?
Let's let Will look at it. Cause it's just going to be an accounting thing. Quite frankly, they could do the same thing by not paying their bill. Right? Yes. So.
But we need to have, do we need to give Will the authority to, is what I guess is what I'm asking is right now.
I think you can provide staff direction to look into it and just give us a week to kind of gather some information. We can finalize it either. Confirm at work session or at the next regular board meeting. And I do think, um, with the rate increase request, there is a need for a public hearing. So maybe before you guys make a motion, you want to do, do that public hearing. I, I thought I saw that in the.
Well, public hearing, go into the public hearing and say, you know, there won't be a race rating increase right now.
Anybody here who wants to testify on the request, then you guys can make a motion and.
Does, is that.
Am I correct on that, Eric? Do we need to have a public hearing?
Um, so I don't see it listed on the agenda. Um, what I understand is that this is a request. Um, that would exceed the CPIU, that would not exceed the CPI water sewer and trash. Um, I, my cursory scan of the franchise agreement, I see that it mentions the consumer price index. But doesn't necessarily specify which price index. The reason that matters is because under the franchise agreement, um, there are two methods by which. Um, the rate could be adjusted. One of them is just to match the CPI. And one of them is to exceed the CPI, the CPI, um, again, not being terribly well specified. Uh, if it is the latter, then that normally would require a public hearing. So with that, if there are people who are here and they would like to, um, share their thoughts. I don't see any downside into allowing them to have that.
Before we go there, is, is this something that would be helpful to you guys?
Answer, I think we would also need to kind of connect with our finance and our accounting team to better understand the true implications. Of heard it upfront and then repay, um, at some point in time. Um, so we would need to do some.
I think the repay would be monthly. So, so you would pay your bill and then we would refund. If, if I understood Jackie right, is that what you were saying?
This was your suggestion. I mean, you wanted the 2.2% for us. And I'm just saying we waive ours presently. We're not waiving, waiving our right to do it and we expect it back. But. I mean, that was your, that was your request was for it.
Well, we will figure out how to make it work and, and do appreciate the consideration on that.
It's because from what I'm understanding here, it's no either way. So. One or the other. Okay. I thought it was more generous. It puts in the skin in the game for the county to facilitate this new contract.
And I think it's best that we wait this week and you guys all kind of regroup and figure it out and then come back, don't you?
Yeah.
I think, I think.
I don't think we need a hearing right now myself.
Yeah. And I, I think if there's a motion to be made, it's to direct staff to further investigate. Or I don't know, investigate is quite the word. There might be a different word, but to proceed with negotiations with Republic. That would seem to me to be the motion that we need to make. That would seem to me to be the motion that we need to make.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you so much.
So do you want to make that?
I I made that motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to instruct uh, Will to continue negotiations with Republic.
Sounds good.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
From her.
I
Barney, I move. Thank you.
You're not going to stick around for the rest of the meeting? I'm totally joking.
Thank you.
If we would have given them their money.
I changed their mind by the end of the meeting.
Thank you both for coming.
Hey, Casey, you're up, sir. Approval of twenty five thousand grand award.
Good morning, Commissioners. Casey Dilly from the Fairgrounds. Uh, several months back, we applied for a Ag West community, a local community grant. Um, and we were fortunately um, awarded that grant for twenty five thousand. The money is going to be used to purchase forty additional small animals livestock pens. And there is no matching funds required for this grant. So I would respectfully ask that the Commissioners consider accepting this grant. Um, there's a very specific letter that needs to be written and go to a specific email. You instruct me to do it or have legal counsel do that portion of it. So I'm just here to ask for the acceptance of the grant.
I don't know how it gets any better than this.
No, I
I I mean, I just don't even know how anybody could
This is pretty money.
Yes, this is, this is wonderful. I'm so excited and I know our small animal things are growing because we have people that have limitations and can't have the large animals. So this is, this is like Christmas.
It is
Christmas in July.
Actually, after the last legislature session.
Yes, and and I really thank Ag West. This is very generous of them. And I've been told that Wilco is also going to provide a cost, which is also, so I want to commend both of them
Correct.
For their generosity to Creek County and to the children of Creek County. I think it's wonderful.
We don't use the exact amount of the grant, so I think we're looking at some rabbit cages for the additional twenty a month, hundred dollars that would be there.
Perfect. This is wonderful. I I very gladly make a motion to accept the grant for the Ag West Local Advisory Committee Grant Award of twenty five thousand.
Think you also need to add in there to have Casey or
Staff, would you prefer it be you or would you prefer it be legal?
However.
Can I ask you, Will, how you would like to proceed?
Who's busier?
I think we're both busy. I can do it. I can do it.
Okay, no, I, yeah, I, it sounds like Casey's familiar.
And instruct our fair manager, Casey, to go ahead and do the written correspondence.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded to approve the twenty five thousand grant from Ag West and to have Casey write the letter. Any more discussion?
No, except hooray, hooray.
Good job.
Favor say aye.
Hermy guy.
Proffered aye.
Barney, I.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Casey.
And thank all the agricultural industry that um, borrows all their money from Ag West that
There you go.
Helps do this.
Yeah.
All the farmers and ranchers.
Yep, you're right.
They financed it.
So every
And my operating loan every year.
Every little bit helps. There we go.
Hey. On the right screen here. Kelly.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Kelly Coffield, Airport Manager. What I have for you today is a request for approval for an aircraft hangar land lease transaction. We have an older hangar, uh, an existing hangar that's um, has been sold or in the process of being sold. We have a new lease in process. Um, the new lease has been signed. And with any lease, there's also a termination of lease. So this is actually two parts. Um, so I'm looking for approval of the transaction. With this, again, something I just, I had noticed the the buyer signed the lease in the memorandum. The memorandum also asked for a notarized signature, you know, and it didn't get notarized. Uh, so that's number one. And two, the termination of the seller, we have not received that signature and notarized document yet. So I'm looking for your approval and or signatures outside of um, Commissioner, the board meeting. Um, so we can facilitate the sale of of the transaction. Press, if you press that.
So I I when, when I I don't recall the contracts having to be notarized. Is that, is that, is that something new?
So Commissioners, there are two documents that need to be notarized. Um, one of them is the termination of the existing lease. Um, and the reason that would be notarized is uh, not only to verify that the person signing has legal authority to sign, but also so it can be recorded. Um, the other document that would be recorded is the memorandum of um, that is not the lease itself, but that gives notice to potential future transactions that there is a lease that does affect the real property. And that one, again, because it would be recorded, would be notarized. The lease itself would not necessarily need to be notarized.
Go ahead, Kelly. Yeah, so uh, yeah, things have changed a little bit. We we did have a a form and a process, but we've had some changes. So this got a little bit, a little bit sticky. Um, I'm trying to keep the process rolling for the buyer and the seller. So I guess my, I believe the documents are are correct. Um, we just need to, I guess my request is to sign outside of the board meeting. So we don't, I don't have to wait another two weeks to get it
Get it signed.
In support of the buyer and seller since they've already been working on this for a month or so.
Right.
Unless he suggests a different.
It's the memorandum of the ground lease that be notarized, not the lease. Okay.
Correct. And that was, yeah, that was new.
And does that have to be notarized by all the Commissioners? Or can one Commissioner be delegated to do it?
The thing that's on the thing has all three.
I know that, but I'm asking if it can be because it's much more difficult to get every three people to line up if somebody's not around.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, my feeling is that because the form itself contemplates three signatures, we should at this juncture not make a change. Um, I think that's probably gonna, as Kelly observed, is gonna gum up the works and cause a delay. Uh, maybe in the future, what we can do is modify those forms so that it only needs to be um, signed on behalf of one Commissioner, uh, just to streamline that process.
So
So I understand, but I'm afraid it's going to gum up the process this time. And nobody signed it yet.
Could we sign it right after the meeting?
I think we're waiting until we received it, right?
Yeah, so the the lease can be signed, the memorandum, and again, subject to whatever has has to say, it can be signed. We still are waiting, would need to wait for the notarized signature from the buyer.
So here's what I think um, can be done. And I think Seth has a good idea. Um, the Commissioners can make a motion to um, sign the documents. But that is uh, subject to the receipt of fully executed copies from the counterparties. So just because you sign doesn't necessarily mean the document's ready as to um, uh, we have to receive the signed copy from the other party too.
Right.
So if we never get that, the transaction is still not approved because both parties have not agreed to it. But we'll hold on to that, wait until we receive the signed copies and the notarized copies from the counterparties. Hopefully we'll receive those soon. One of the counterparties is in Florida, so I imagine that going to take a little bit of time just to get over to us because, again, because it has to be recorded, um, that means we need a wet ink signature.
So, and I just have another, another question. So we just went through all these leases and figured them all out. Has the lease been changed to or just the addition of this memorandum of of ground lease requires the the signatures?
Commissioners, do you mind if I just step in for a second? Let me write, Eric?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so yeah, this used to be my my domain. This, for the record, John Asser, uh, Community Development Director, former Assistant County Counsel. The lease form in front of you is is fine. It's not the um, most current lease form that I'd been using that incorporated our lease policy. It was a shorter version of the lease, uh, but typically the memorandum of lease doesn't change the rights of the parties. All it does is put third parties on notice. And so the the lease form itself could be executed today. Um, the memorandum of lease, that needs to go back. There's also a provision in there that needs to be written in on the termination uh, date. Which now if that gets handwritten, then it's it's, it won't be notarized. They can't notarize if there's handwriting on there. So um, just Eric can can give you guys legal guidance here, but I think the uh, the lease itself could be executed today. And then the memorandum of lease could be executed at a later date and then recorded. Like I said, it's just to put third parties on notice. We usually don't do those unless the lender asks for it.
So I I I think that I would like to see the lease get signed and I believe I would like to see the lease get signed and then take care of this memorandum. So we can speak, speed this up.
To have you, the the commi-
Yeah.
Commissioner sign it.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so I apologize. I didn't mean to cause any confusion here. I'm just trying to keep, keep things rolling. And there has some, there's a couple of moving parts here.
Turned it off.
I
Yeah.
I think what we
What we can do now and we'll
I think we do approval for the aircraft hangar land lease transaction with signatures on the land lease to happen today. And further and in and outside of the board signatures for the memorandum of lease. Is that exactly what we're he- I'm hearing?
And termination.
And termination would be also at a later date.
I'm sorry, so I, the the termination lease is a different document. That does change the rights of the parties. And so um, again, I I defer to Eric, but the termination lease should be signed uh, contemporaneously with the new lease. The memorandum of lease doesn't change the rights of the parties. That can
There's three entities.
Documents.
There's a land lease, there's a termination of lease, and then the memorandum of land lease is at a later date.
Do all three need to be notified or notarized?
The only document that gets recorded as well.
Crazy question.
The only document that gets recorded is the memorandum of lease, because like I said, that that goes to clerk's office, gets recorded, is in the deed record. So it puts third parties on notice. There is a lease hold there. Documents.
The lease.
Termination. Oh, wait, the termination. The termination is, yeah, sorry, I apologize. It's been wrong. The termination lease does also get notarized and recorded.
Three documents.
All three need to be notarized.
Not the lease itself. The lease itself doesn't, isn't out there in the open. Is it that clear?
Okay.
I think we're going to s- the the lease, the lease has been signed from the other parties, right? So I believe that we can sign that.
So I would suggest not signing it now because we have not received the termination of the prior lease. Is what could happen. I don't think it will, but what could happen is that the prior lease uh, leasehold says, I've changed my mind. I want to keep this. So then we have signed a lease to a new person for the same ground that we have leased to the others. So what I might suggest then is just to approve um, or to authorize the signing of the documents outside of a meeting. All the documents are in the um, agenda packet, so the publics have the right to scrutinize them. Um, and that approval will be subject to receiving the signed copies from the counterparties.
So a motion, and um, Eric, I'm looking at you, would be to request approval for the aircraft hangar land lease transactions with signatures to occur outside of the board.
So what I might suggest is a motion to authorize signing uh, the termination of lease, the memorandum of lease, and the airport ground hangar lease outside of a meeting. Um, subject to receiving the signed copies from the counterparties.
So moved.
Second.
Those have been made and seconded. Discussion.
No discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Hermy guy.
Some of them.
Hey.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Kelly. And thank you. Hey, John, thank you. Title plat.
Morning Commissioners, yes. Uh, John Isner, Community Development Director. Uh, there's a couple of plats before you today. The first is uh, Grand Ridge Subdivision Two, Phase Two. Uh, so this, the master plan on Grand Ridge Two, this is Bobby Kennedy's project, um, has fifteen total lots. And so this phase two is just lots through ten. The uh, Planning Commission approved it on uh, June twenty fifth. And so um, the the code says that um, without delay, after the Planning Commission approves it, it's to go to the Board of Commissioners for approval as well. And so that plat is ready for signature. Um, you can do it once I finish it. We can do it at the end of the meeting. Um, I need to sign it as well, but uh, are there any questions on that one? Okay, the next one is Brusada's Phase Fourteen. Replat of the replats. This was originally platted in twenty twenty. They replatted this to do the the treehouse um, concept in twenty twenty two. Uh, with smaller lots, but now they're going back to their kind of traditional model. So this reduces the numbers of uh, single family sites by nine. So now the ratio is six thirty five to two fifty nine. So we're under the the two point five to one ratio on this one. Don't see any issues. It was uh, approved administratively on April tenth and the Planning Commission approved it last week. And so kind of jumbling up these agenda item numbers, but I'd recommend a a motion to approve the Grand Ridge uh, to Phase Two plat.
Okay, perfect. Uh, uh, I seconded.
Most have been made and seconded to approve the Grand View
Grand Ridge. Grand Ridge.
Uh, Phase Two subdivision plat. Uh, any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Hermy guy.
Proffered aye.
Barney, I. Some of them.
The next I'd recommend a motion to approve the Brusada Ranch Phase Fourteen replat of the replat.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, most have been made and seconded.
No discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Barney, I.
Hermy guy.
So move.
All right. So next we have ordinance three fifty two. Um, this is a change of our zoning map up in Palabute. Uh, this uh, converts that land from EFU to rural residential R ten. Um, there's currently one dwelling on the property. The Planning Commission heard and approved this for four to zero on May fourteenth. You guys heard this um, the June twenty fifth, it was June, your last meeting, you guys heard the first hearing on this ordinance.
Yep.
Uh, this property is originally part of the Palabute Study. Uh, six eighteen was the date. Um, and so this is an ordinance, second reading, um, recommend a motion read by title only and then open up a public hearing.
I make a motion to read by title only.
Second.
Most have been made. Any discussion? Or has been made and seconded to read by title only. All in favor, say aye.
Hermy.
Barney, I. Before the Board of County Commissioners, Creek County, Oregon, and ordinance amending the Creek County zoning map to adopt a zone change for MTL one six one four one zero 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 six oh one and declaring an emergency for ordinance three fifty two. Now open the public hearing.
No one's jumping up.
That's not what you guys are here for.
So online, is there anyone that wants to uh, talk about ordinance three fifty two?
There's a, there's a cemetery that kind of Yeah, yeah. It's like eighteen point seven five.
I don't see any there either. So there's we'll comment, we'll close public hearing.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number three five two, which is amending the Creek County zoning map to adopt a zone change and declare an emergency. Always like how we're declaring an emergency, like the floodwaters are coming, but.
So we're trying to start our zone map, have to be.
You want to sit around and grab the plat, we'll sign it right when we're done.
I just find, I I find that's it. It's just interesting in in Planning Commission, we've got a lot of uh, I just find, I, I find, that's, it, it's just interesting, in, in planning commission, we've had a lot of, uh, declaring an emergency, which-
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Most have been made in second to prove ordinance number three fifty-two, any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor say aye. Barney, aye. So moved.
Thank you Commissioners.
Managers report.
Uh, good morning again Commissioners, uh, I don't have, uh, much to report, uh, I will note that, uh, Commissioner Hermerick and I successfully graduated from AOC County College, uh, we might not, we might not get our certificate for, for a couple months, but, uh, I, I appreciated the pro- process, the opportunity to learn, uh, even on, in last week's session on transportation, I learned some helpful little nuggets that I think will benefit the county, so I assume Commissioner Hermit feels the same way, I think we learned, learned a, a lot, um, that'll carry forward with our work here at the county, so.
And I think-
Have that, those regular meetings.
And I think the big thing was the networking, that now we know, you know, like you say, we know the faces that go to the different counties, and, and I think that was really a super helpful in, in county colleges networking.
Yeah. Agreed, it was great to, great to meet a bunch of other county folks and get to know the folks at AOC a little bit better as well, so. Um, so that, those, those regular meetings are, are over now for us, so won't be running out to Salem as frequently, uh, but, uh, yeah, that's all I had really for you guys this morning, and I hope everybody has a great, uh, Fourth of July.
Thank you, you also.
Yeah.
Commissioner update?
Well, I, I'm gonna add here, and I thank you for having Hannah here with us to help us, uh, rule for the day, thank you Hannah.
Thank you for the moral support.
Yes, we needed you. No one started fighting because you were here. Okay.
And have a fun time at Grandma and Grandpas, like I said, they're the best.
Yes, that, that, they are the best, because they spoil you, you gotta take advantage of Grandma and Grandpas, yeah. I have no, I have nothing to report.
Yeah, me neither.
I don't either. Public comment, anybody like to speak?
Come on Julie, we, we need to hear from you. Okay, you've been sitting here very patiently.
Uh, Julie Thompson, Green Valley Road, um, I just have a few questions about our water situation still, um, I know it's still going on. Um, so I guess, you know, we talked in our April twenty-third meeting, I think it was April twenty-third at the library, about getting out a letter to more people in the county, um, about the water situation, so that they were aware that it was possibly, you know, a serious thing, and, um, nobody has done that. It's not happening. Um, I have been in contact with, um, OHA David R, I don't know if I say his last name right, um, he, this was on, I have it in an email, but like May eleventh, I think, and he said that he said, I don't know what you're talking about, are you talking about your second round of testing? And I said, no, I'm referring to, and explained, you know, that we all, the county and Greg from DQ got together and said, we should send a letter out. He replied back a few days later and said, this other lady was gonna start working on this letter, sorry for the delay, we'll get to it. Nothing's happened. Um, so, I, I started thinking about maybe why it's not happening, um, and just my thoughts, one is that they don't want more people to think that their water is bad, they don't want news to get out about that, because then property values go down, this affects taxes, this affect, I mean, I'm probably thinking way over this whole process, but, um, I also did some research and found out that it's not necessarily the county that controls the population growth of our county, it's the state ultimately that controls that, so does the state not want this information to get out, because Cook County is growing, and we are supposed to grow faster, because the shoots county is filling up? So, is this part of a big plan, and is there any way to, for you guys to help with this, with the environmental health department for Cook County to maybe get this letter out, like we talked about at the library?
Yeah, I, I think, let me, I think, uh, my guess is it's just inefficiencies of the state, and you're looking too much into it. I, I know that's embarrassing to say.
Thanks for your question, so there's, the issue was, there was just, um, I think, questions over who's the proper entity to send the letter. Uh, Cook County is the local arm of OHA, our health department here, and so our health department is gonna send out a letter, they've been preparing things, they have the, the mailing labels ready to go. I just need to get them the documents, and I've been exchanging emails with Katie, uh, for the past twenty-four hours to get that set out, so, yeah, it's going out immediately.
Okay, okay, great. Good, um, my next question, I guess, too, is we talked about at the library that, you know, Knife River was supposed to allow onsite testing. Still not happening. Not going anywhere, they're, they're going through a list of regulations for their testing program and ways to do it, and you know, it went down from like fifty-four stipulations to now they're down to like thirteen stipulations, and they're just dragging their feet, um, and we have asked for an audit of Dogami. Basically, we got a BS letter that said, you should contact DEQ about the quality of your water. Um, I'm, they, they have no idea what's going on, nobody evidently cares, or even looks into it, why, I mean, why would they reply back with a letter that says, yes, you know, we're gonna pass this along, and they didn't pass it along for months, and then we forwarded it to playing degrees, I mean, we just, we went all out, so it went to the Secretary of State, it went to the governor, nothing.
What did you hear back from, uh, the Senator and Representative?
Uh, actually, nothing. I never got a reply back from either one of them.
That's, that's-
That's not good.
It is, yeah, so, um-
Uh, uh, yeah, I don't mean to pass the buck, but they're the ones that are in charge of those agencies, and so Will and I talked to the Secretary of State about it, and he said, yeah, that's something we can look into, uh, no guarantees. But he said, at the same time, both of those represent, your, both of your representatives, all of our representatives, have the power to then call those agencies and say, you know, you, we need to look into this, and so, I, I, I don't-
I don't know where to go with it, I mean, they, they actually did say too, that they've already basically planned all their audits for this year, so maybe next year. Which, I mean, uh, so now, we're, we're letting Knife River just keep doing, basically, you know, I mean, they're at Stafford's now, they're not at Woodward's, I get that. But, they've refilled the wash-ons. Or, the holding ponds, whatever you wanna call them, they've refilled those, and the message that we got back from Greg on why they refilled them was because they needed to wash some material from the other pit. That never, nobody ever saw that run, so I think what is happening is, it's getting drug out and drug out, until things stir up, and then when they finally do get onsite, it's not gonna look nice for that. Um, that being said, I really wish that the county would really reconsider pulling the CUP from Washington. Because at any time, they can go right back to using. And we, I, I have test results from our place, four of them, two by, um, Box R, which is Nielsen, and then choose from Ball Foster, which the DQ people did. The one level that was the lowest, was the one that we did, who was our, in February of twenty-four. That was after they hadn't been doing anything, because everything was froze up, they couldn't do anything, after that, they go back up again. So I'm not a geologist, I'm not a scientist, but it just seems like it's common sense that maybe they should not be washing or doing anything there, until somebody gets onsite. And I know what you're gonna say, we can't do it, get sued by Knife River, it's impossible, but I just have to ask again.
Yeah, I appreciate the question, but again, we, we did a deep dive into what our abilities were, and it just was not the John or Will kind of speak to that.
It's, it's very disappointing, very disappointing.
Uh, John Asser, Community Development Director, so on the, um, Knife River study, where we are now is, uh, she's right, they have been going back and forth on what the plan is, and so this is a, um, discussion that involves DEQ, EPA, Dogami, and Knife River, and they're kind of going through the conditions and the process, and so EPA will say, I want you guys to do this, and then Knife River comes back and says, that's really not feasible because of X, Y, and Z, and then they have to sort it out, and there's I don't remember how many, there's, there's a ton of things they've been trying to work out, I've heard they're close to that, uh, to getting that finished. Um, DEQ's stance is that it's, it's basically, this is all in Dogami's domain right now, and so it's on them, and that's, it's, county is, you know, on the sidelines in this process, we don't have any control over that. Um, but it's supposed to be done soon, I'll give an update, the neighbor sampling results should be back any day now, um, I heard, um, you already got yours? Okay. So yeah, they should be coming in soon, um, those, we're going to inform DEQ quite a bit on, um, how they wanted to, um, invoke their authority over the groundwater. Uh, and so, um, it makes a lot of sense to wait till we get those results back, and to see with DEQ, how they analyze those, and how they interpret them. Um, as far as the county's position is at this point, there's very little activity happening at the Knife River Woodward site, um, certainly nothing that would be grounds to say they are in violation of their conditional use permit, that would give us the right to do anything as far as, uh, enforcement action, or revoking the permit at this time. Um, so they have water in the ponds, but I don't think there's a lot of activity happening, right? Yeah, so. Good, and so they're, they're, they're waiting, that's part of the study, DEQ, we have the hold, um, again, the hold on them expanding, the hold on them really doing any more activity until DEQ study's done, um, and so my advice, I think it was a month ago, was to stay the course, and we're, we're closer to the end of that course than we were last time I gave that advice.
We emailed DEQ, uh, Greg and DEQ yesterday, he's on vacation, I mean, um, I didn't get an answer back, but at the library, he asked what would happen if they didn't comply. It was a very, very hard answer to get, we had to ask repeatedly to get this answer, and it was that they would be fine, and that it would go to the DOJ, all these, none of this has happened, and according to the letter that the governor sent out in June of last year, so over a year ago, it was supposed to happen quickly, basically, I think it said something about like the end of September. And then it was, well, we wanna do more testing, and we wanna do it with your testing at the same time. That was the answer that we got, that's why we're, we're gonna do a second round of testing, we're gonna test Knife River at the same time, so we can compare. None of it happened. So, because you can't do anything, can you help us contact somebody in the governmental system to help push this through again, because we're not getting any?
Yeah, I'm happy to call Mike McLean and see if he'll give you guys a call back.
And I, I, I have a, a pretty good relationship with Vicki Breeze Iverson, I'll, I'll follow up on that for you, Julie, it's, it's very, it's just very disappointing that, yeah, that we're still here, still going through the same thing. Still, yeah.
And, and my guess on the, be, them not being allowed on the property, my guess is that that's, if they were to just say no and not negotiate, and I know that's frustrating, because they're probably masterful about working through the system, and so they, they aren't really saying no. They're saying, we, we got, okay, but we gotta figure this out, and so there, I think that's the, the unfortunate caveat to that, and probably why we're not, I mean, I think if they get to a point where they just say, say, no, we're just not gonna do any of this, that's when
You could do-
You could, you could start, DEQ could start finding and doing those things.
That, that's-
I, yeah, I'm not, I'm not happy about it, but I'm just sharing my thoughts on why we haven't gotten to that point yet.
I might be stepping out of line here, but, um, at the, the hearing at the library, and that question was presented to DEQ, I was kind of letting Greg have the, the spotlight there, but the question was if they, if, uh, we got, what the exact question was, but basically if DEQ says, they can't operate, or they can't do this or that, and they do it any way, that DEQ would find them, right?
Yeah.
Which, they're complying, they're just putting a bunch of criteria on it, they're just, they're, they're spending their time in negotiate, negotiate, they're wasting time, basically.
So Julie, I'm just letting you know now, if, if that does happen, if DEQ does find them, I will be initiating enforcement action on behalf of the county, so.
No, it's very good.
Thank you for the update, I'm sorry this has taken so long.
Yes.
I will, uh,
I will contact-
Yeah, I'll call, I'll call Mike today.
This is over, they should, and with legislation being over, they, there's no reason that they can't.
Well, I think that's the unfortunate part, is they were working on their budget, and they had a lot more ability to call them to task a month ago.
They let the time, yeah, opportunity. Lost. Any more public comment?
Water related, I promise.
Okay, Ashley, it's all right if it is, we would hear-
Might be more difficult if it's not.
Yeah.
Um, you have to say your name though.
Ashley McCormick, and I'm on Green Valley Road, I was at the city meeting last week, and they were talking about the biomass thing, different things there, and I'm curious if you guys at all talked to them about their thoughts and plans, because there was a comment made by Mr. Howard that was kind of frightening, at his complete, and does not understand how, um, DEQ works. And I was just curious if you guys talk at all about what the process would be with one of their concerns being water contamination, because he made a comment saying, one bad water test and it all goes away. And we know that that's not how it works, I was just curious if you guys at all talk to maybe help educate them, because it's not as simple as they think that it is.
I haven't had any conversations with them about the comment.
That's something you guys could do, so that we don't end up in another pickle, because now one of the projected sites is right up against my property, and I, I think that that would be a conversation worth having, because they clearly don't know how this stuff works.
We visit all the time, I'll, I'll bring it up to the city manager on one. Howard said, thank you. Anybody online?
Thank you guys for coming all the time.
Yeah, we enjoy seeing you.
Well, you are probably, you are probably one of the rare ones that love the chairs, but glad to know at least you, uh, well, we-
As, as VIP members, you guys can start sitting in the jury box, yeah.
We'll give you a special little badge, we'll get those sheriff stickers for you.
You spend the most time in the chairs. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no other comments, then, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, conclude this session.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion, which has been made in seconded to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye, Robert.
Barney, aye, so moved.
Okay.